All right, again, welcome to everyone. I know we have special business today. So who's in charge? Who's in charge of TechSpice this morning? Who's leading this lunch?
Nancy.
So we have three entities today. We will have TechSpice for Rowan Institute and our ICMT. So we all do service individuals.
Excellent. So y'all in a hurry or do you have just a bit?
Um, no, we're not in a hurry.
So if we can move the item up a little bit or y'all share us no questions. In a hurry to get back, then we could take just a few more minutes. Maybe 15 minutes will be the item. Is that good with y'all?
Very good with 15 minutes.
Everybody good? Can we have any visitors on this one? Item number three, discuss and take possible action to approve personnel action forms.
Morning, Judge Commissioners. The first personal action form is for Ruby Gaetan County Clerk's Office, a new hire. Next one is an amended personal action form. We changed the effective date. Johnny Pena, HR, transfer. Next one is for Andrea Pope, JP1 dismissal. Next one is for Jeronima Aguilar, JP1 promotion and transfer. Next one is for Esmeralda Trinidad, JP1 temp hire. Next one is for Michelle Barales, JP2, part-time new hire. Next one is for Jennifer Conigny Auditor's Office, increase within approved slot. Next one is Varan Kumar Bhakta, PDO's office, new hire. The next one is Sharima Gamatero Manayan, PDO's office, new hire.
I'll make a motion to approve the first one. I have a motion in a second to approve the personnel action forms. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number four, county auditor monthly report.
Good morning, everyone. This county auditor monthly report is for the beginning of March 2025. On page two, you'll see that our cash on hand is just over $34 million. This amount does not exclude any funds. One note, the interest for February has not been recorded in these numbers yet. We have reported January 2025 tax revenue and we're waiting to receive February. And moving on to page three. This will show a breakdown of cash at the firm level. And there are five funds that I would like to go over. 59 fund for the Sheriff's Office, Laos. It is showing a negative 1,500. There was a deposit that was received at the end of February and has now been recorded. So that's back to positive. The 110 fund is showing a negative 266,000. We are waiting to receive Operation Lone Star reimbursement for 102,000. And...
This one, by the way.
Okay. 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 And then there's also a reimbursement request that still needs to be submitted for this year's grant expenses. The 131 fund for the PDO is showing just under, negative just under 617,000. Several things with that. We are waiting to receive quarter one from TIDC and that amount is 525,000 that we'll be receiving. The January county contributions for Kendall and Kerr, they've been received now, but they're not included in these numbers. As of last week, we are still waiting to receive January from Bandera County. And the February invoices went out last week as well to the counties. Fund 132, SB 22 money, that's showing funds that were received at the beginning of the fiscal year. And Fund 135 for FEMA is showing a negative 71,961 now. And that's including the expenses that we're expecting reimbursement for, for the master drainage plan. And then also a payment that went out to Grantworks as well. And on the last page for debt. For TN 2018, that is removed from the list and it's now paid off. And at the bottom for the precinct prepayments, those, for TN 2020, those payments were completed at the end of February. And so those balances have been updated to reflect those payments. And that concludes our report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I have a quick question. 132 fund, I was saying, we still have some outstanding items from last budget. You have a campaign from there or? Gilbert, Gilbert, there's still some things we have to do for this week 22 from the last budget. Not the new, not this year, but only?
I think so.
The reason I'm here is because it's 500,000 and it shows us 73.
Okay. I can check on that.
I guess we checked that. Any questions?
Thank you.
Item five, we're having action on today. Item six, discuss and take possible action to approve the annual service agreement of Tech 84 Incorporated for the Intercept Whole Body Scanner located in jail. Gilbert, can you?
Good morning. Good morning.
So this is a full ice cream, like new intake. And you can see that he's got contraband included internally. So Gilbert has some stats this morning. He's going to share with us this morning, or this is to update the service agreement on it. But in the amount of 11,225, he thought he would share.
Good morning. As Judge stated this morning, anyone that's brought into Medina County Jail goes through this full body scanner, just like you do at the airport. For the year 2024, the Sheriff's Office completed 1,586 scans. Out of that scan, five scans tested positive for contraband that was being brought into the jail. This year to date, from January to date, it's been used 256 times. So this is a well-used tool that we ask for continued support financially, continue using this system.
And this would be actually the machine. What is that machine? Would it be the whole of the machine? If it were to go to the...
Our buffers, yes.
So this is for a one-year service agreement?
Yes.
Last year it was 10,900 and it's gone to 11,225.
That is correct. We did find some issues in the contract where they're supposed to come out and service it, maintain it. That hasn't been done, but we brought it to their attention. So that's starting. We've already had a scheduled maintenance visit on their part.
I have a motion, Commissioner Sitter, second by Commissioner Lynch, to approve the annual service agreement of Tech 84 Incorporated for the Intercept Whole Body Scanner located in jail. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item seven, discuss and take possible action to approve light item transfers.
Good morning again. So we just have one light item transfer. We have the amounts that departments have chosen to move out of the expense lines that are listed and into their employee incentive line.
I have a motion, Commissioner Sitter, second. Commissioner Gass, we only need to approve the light item transfers. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item eight, discuss and take possible action to approve accounts payable.
Good morning. All right, the total accounts payable is 971,653 and 40 cents.
I'll make a motion to approve the accounts payable with no exceptions.
Second.
I have a motion, Commissioner, second by Commissioner Waller, that we approve the accounts payable with no exceptions. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item nine, discuss and take possible action to approve dispersment funds since last Commissioner's court meeting.
All right, we pay utilities, fuel, and dental plates in the amount of 43,128 and 72 cents.
I'll make a motion to approve this person's funds since the last court meeting.
Second.
I have a motion, second, to approve this person's funds since the last Commissioner's court meeting. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item 10, discuss and take possible action to approve the county treasurer's monthly report.
All right, this monthly report is for the month of January 2025. The month ending cap, cash balance is 24,478,557 and 2 cents. With the month ending debt owed to Medina County is 20,805,000.
I'll make the motion to approve the county treasurer's monthly report.
Second.
I have a motion, Commissioner Waller, second, and Commissioner Gass, we only need to approve the county treasurer's monthly report. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item number 11, discuss and take possible action to approve March 2025 as we hit a cross month. And I have a proclamation, I'm going to read it this time. This, this March, we celebrate American Red Cross Month by recognizing compassion and acts of people in Medina County and by renewing our commitment to lend a helping hand to our neighbors in the U.S. Since Claire Martin founded the American Red Cross more than 140 years ago, generation after generation has stepped up in delivering relief and care across our country and around the world, bringing out the best in humanity in times of crisis. Advancing this noble mission, volunteers and supporters who now give back to the American Red Cross still come to chapter remain unwavering their commitment to prevent and alleviate the suffering in the face of today's emergencies. Their voluntary and generous contribution shine a beacon of hope in people's darkest hours. Whether it's delivering shelter, food, and comfort during disasters, supporting service members, veterans, and their families, saving lives with First Aid, CPR, ADD, and other skills, or delivering international aid and reconnecting loved ones separated by global crisis. This work to uplift our communities truly made possible by those who selflessly answer the call to help, whenever and wherever it's needed. We hereby recognize this month of March in honor of their remarkable service and we ask everyone to join in their commitment to care for one another. Now, therefore, we, the Commissioners' Court of Medina County, Texas, do hereby proclaim March 2025 as American Red Cross Month. And we encourage all citizens to support this organization and its noble humanitarian mission. I'll make several motions.
I will make a motion that we proclaim March 2025 as Red Cross Month.
Second.
I have a motion for Commissioner Lynch, second by Commissioner Waller, to proclaim March 2025 as Red Cross Month. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 12, discuss and take possible action to proclaim March 2025 as Disabilities Awareness Month. And thank you, especially all my TechSpice friends that came out today. I had, I had to give a tour not long ago to, I recognize a lot of y'all were here when we went to the courthouse, right? How many of you were here when we looked at this building? You were here.
I was here. Oh, yes.
So funny story, we turned this building and then we went over to the historic courthouse and had a tour of that building. And on the way, I know Amber there in the back. And we were walking back across and I was telling Amber, telling her something and Amber's, she goes, "You should do tacos." Well, Amber, I'm supposed to be talking a lot. I'm supposed to be, I'm supposed to be kind of going to tour today. She called me out for talking a lot.
You know me back here?
I do, I do.
I'm there, I'm coming, so nice to meet you.
Very nice to meet you and thank you for being here today.
Okay.
Y'all are, y'all are the best group in here. I'm not going to hear because sometimes you don't want me to. Okay, so let's, I'm going to read this proclamation for y'all this morning. So this is proclamation for Disabilities Awareness Month. Whereas March is nationally recognized as Disabilities Awareness Month, and whereas Aurora Isimbray serves and advocates for persons with intellectual and developmental disabilities, and whereas by organizing this, Commissioner Court meeting, Aurora Isimbray and all participants have raised awareness about struggles and strengths of individuals with disabilities of any type, and whereas by raising awareness about disabilities, Aurora Isimbray helps promote and safeguard the civil liberties and responsibilities of individuals with disabilities, and whereas by organizing this event, the county of Medina, Aurora Isimbray brings people with disabilities to the center of the community, and whereas by collaborating with local agencies who serve special needs individuals, Aurora Isimbray seeks to raise the quality of care for special needs individuals. Now, therefore, we, the Commissioners' Court of Medina County, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of March as Disabilities Awareness Month. And we encourage all citizens to participate in the events that advance the cause of persons with disabilities organized by Aurora Isimbray to raise awareness about intellectual and developmental disabilities and to safeguard the individual rights and liberties of our neighbors and special needs. In witness whereof, I appear to set my hand and cause the seal of Medina County to be affixed on this 10th day of March 2025. Congratulations, all of you, for Disabilities Awareness Month. So with that, we're going to get a picture. Everybody that's here, y'all can just come all up in front of us, in front here. We'll get a big picture. Oh, yeah. Yeah. And all in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Come on up, everybody. Yeah, a little closer. Come in a little tighter. Did you hear, y'all got them all down and talking? This is perfect, can you see everybody?
I believe so, yes.
Jerry, good seeing you, baby. Take care. I'll get you one. No, I don't have one with me, but I'll get you that too. Okay, I'll get, I'll get it, you'll get it, don't worry.
I have a puppy in cricket.
Okay, we'll wait for the next person. We have more questions and we can also come up with her. So, okay, so we had a presentation, discussion regarding the county welfare board, the co-op early with the law. And so the court, county had a child, where child county welfare board. And it's not been, we don't know exactly when, but it has not been operational in quite a while. I believe that because we had Hank, and Hank was kind of filling all that role and they're not being here anymore. And we have the law, they need to... And we have to belong, they need to start the child welfare board again. So today we're looking about, want to make the court aware that it's a process we'd like to start to work through. Jennifer has set up very old bylaws that we gave to Maggie a while ago to kind of look over. I say very old because they were gone on time. So it's quite some time since those were written. There goes on the bus change, we're not in. But I mean, this morning really don't need to take really any action other than if the courts do kind of move into that process and start to look at it. And then if you hear of anybody that you think would be interested as a board member.
I don't mind.
Yeah, the same on the text this morning? Yes, so, but I mean, it'll all start through the process and. Yeah, those are some of the, some of the things that we need to look at and that's why I wanted to come here and get a couple court aware because as we start doing, we may hear people that are really interested in serving on this or know somebody. They might not come to you, but you can get somebody that served very well in this kind of law. So I would say at this point, we really don't need to take any action on it other than kind of inform the unit, just kind of start working through the process. And as we get more information about how it all is set up, what things all look like, we just bring that information back to you all then and provide the information till we get together. That's all I'm applying. All right, and we will take up at 10:14, discuss and take possible action to approve an application to vacate and replat a clause 230, 231, 232 against Dancing Bear Ranch subdivision unit 2A, okay, and then unit 1, all of F and 12 and 3.
Good morning. Property here is lots 20, sorry, 231 and 232 of Dancing Bear Ranch, Unit 3. This, the current owner of these lots is interested in replating them, just consolidating them into one lot. We have approval from Dancing Bear Association and, if there's any questions? They're just, yes, they're just combining. It's gonna be a 13.861 acre tract.
I always like it when they combine lots and just re-plant. So they kind of get a plan and maybe if they went through all the process, would give it a H R A approval. So I would make a motion to approve an application to vacate and replat lots 230, 231, and 232 of the Dancing Bear Ranch subdivision, Unit 2A, located in precinct 1 off of Acton 1283.
I have a motion by Commissioner Castile Yon, seconded by Commissioner Sitter, to approve the application to vacate replat lots 230, 231, and 232 against Dancing Bear Ranch subdivision Unit 2A, located in precinct 1 off of Acton 1283. And that is, what's the line?
It's gonna be 230A and I believe it's Unit 3.
230A.
I don't know, did you just say 2A maybe? Should be Unit 3. Okay, just wanna make sure. Okay. Lot number 230.
Lot number would be 230-.
230A, correct.
So I'm gonna amend my motion instead of lot, or Unit 2, it's gonna be Unit 3.
Okay, and already lot 230.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion? All in favor of I?
I.
All of those things signed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, item 50, discuss and take possible action to approve final flat established in 100 Ranch subdivision, Unit 14C, located in precinct 2, on County Road 381 South.
I would approve lot 103 in Unit 14C.
Second.
Motion, seconded by Commissioner Castile Yon, approve the final flat established in 100 Ranch subdivision, Unit 14C, located in precinct 2 on County Road 381 South. Any other discussion? All in favor of I?
I.
All of those things signed. Motion carries. Item 60, discuss and take possible action to adopt resolutions supporting a legislative amendment to Texas Water Code, Section 27051. So in front of you, what you have is, is part of our water alliance, we have been working through the possibility of being able to have a bill filed where we can drill through the headworks and be able to go through the headworks to fill water into another property. And of course, that requires, requires a bill which will, there's a couple of them who wants to tag it along to another bill or to create their own. This is us supporting that as part of our ASR project, so we can actually inject water into another property below the decks.
Motion to adopt a resolution supporting the legislative amendment to Texas Water Code, second.
Motion by Commissioner Sitter, seconded by Commissioner Lynch, to abolish the resolution supporting the legislative amendments to the Texas Water Code, Section 27051. Any other discussion? All in favor of I?
I.
All of those things signed. Motion carries. Item 70, discuss and take possible action to appoint Commissioner Danny Law, Commissioner Precinct 4, to represent Medina County, the director of Medina County Regional Water Alliance Board of Directors. Of course, this is also in reference to the water alliance, as you all know, we became members of it, kind of everybody's been attending to get information. They do need to now go together, the official board for it, and so with this recommendation that we made, Commissioner Law, our representative, our board of directors, of course, at some point, now that we have to attend, they're gonna give us information back in for it as well, so.
I would like to appoint Danny Law, Commissioner Precinct 4, for Medina County, as the director of Medina County River Water Alliance Board.
I'll second that. I have a question. Are we even willing to use the water there for this office? Yes, everybody is. I guess that's correct. Okay, our motion is seconded to appoint Danny Law, Commissioner Precinct 4, to represent Medina County as a director on Medina County Regional Water Alliance's Board of Directors. Any other discussion? All in favor of I?
I.
All of those things signed. Motion carries. Item 18, discuss and take possible action to appoint David Lynch, Commissioner Precinct 3, to represent Medina County membership as an alternate director on Medina County Regional Water Alliance's Board of Directors. So this is the same board, but we give Commissioner Lynch as the backup person to Commissioner Law. He was appointed to the team.
I would like a motion to appoint David Lynch, Commissioner Precinct 3, to represent Medina County membership as alternate director of Medina County River Water Board.
Second.
I have a motion within a second to approve David Lynch, Commissioner Precinct 3, to represent Medina County membership as the alternate director on Medina County Regional Water Alliance Board of Directors. Any other discussion? All in favor of I?
I.
All of those things signed. Motion carries. Item 19, discuss and take possible action to approve the purchase of a roller from Cooper Equipment Company from Precinct 4, through the purchasing cooperative pursuant to Texas Local Government Code 271.102C. We have a quote grant of $19,000, $320, and Jennifer's here, if there's any questions in the board's office, I think.
Everything's been.
Everything's been checked on the Bible work?
Yes.
We're good for the purchase if there's what we need.
I would have a motion to approve the purchase of one roller, due for equipment, or the precinct forward, to the person being alternate, County Local Government Code.
Sir? I have a motion, Commissioner Sitter, seconded. Any questions?
Good.
Did you say?
Yes.
I say Commissioner Law, to approve the purchase of a roller from Cooper Equipment Company for Precinct 4, through purchasing cooperative pursuant to Texas Local Government Code 271.102C. Any other discussion? All in favor of I?
I.
All of those things signed. Motion carries. Item 20, discuss and take possible action to approve the purchase of a truck conveyor for Lone Star Trencher, parts LLC for Precinct 2. You have in front of you the amount of $28,549.55. And Jennifer, board's office, comments?
This falls below the 50,000, so it doesn't, there's no requirement for it to go through a co-op, so everything is checked off with this as well.
I would like a motion to approve the purchase of a truck conveyor for Lone Star Trencher or a freighter.
Second. So what is this?
Okay, it's a.
Are you open to handling? Okay, so I have a motion from Commissioner Sitter and a second from Commissioner Law. Is there no discussion? To, I know, to have approved the purchase of the truck conveyor for Lone Star Trencher for LLC for Precinct 2. Is there any discussion?
Yes, there is. Yes, there is.
Go ahead, that's your handle, she has rebuilt hers.
I did a re, it was, it was out of guard for many, many years, basically, you get up to the back of a dump truck and when, when the dump truck bed is slightly open, so it'll drop material on conveyor. So it's specifically used for when you want to whiting, you do like end whitening, so it'll drop the material through the bucket right on the side. So what happens is you wind up saving a lot of material, this material goes directly where you want to.
I thought it was an auger on y'all's. Is it actually a belt?
It's a belt.
Okay, that's ours. Okay.
So it works really well, it might contain a lot of material, and if you go in there and stop that, your road weight and right back, it gives you a better, it's gonna be air.
Well, we are about now on a bunch of stuff, especially we did road, it's on other major multiple eighteen, we're running, if you go down the road, you got that whole end of the road, it's about that deep. It's been impacted.
You can feel that, right?
You don't say a lot, no.
We borrowed it, I was just the way it's sitting.
All your records had, if you were, records looking into the wall and what happened.
So is this a product of a new one?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're currently using it.
She'll need to use first for 75% of that.
You've got a lot of curbs on, that's where it comes in heading, but that's where your local base is, on your inside curve.
Okay, any, any other discussion?
I'll make a motion, I, I guess in a second if I have more.
All in favor of I?
I.
All of those things signed. Motion carries. All right, item 21, discuss and take possible action to submit comments to the Department of the Air Force regarding the draft environmental assessment for Randolph, 2A Low Military Operations Area Special Use airspace. We will have a letter from one of you that put together, and I'm gonna ask Chuck Friesen on, try it on, to come forward for a moment also. I have received this notice and was having some discussion with Banderah County and a lot of concerns over, over what they're wanting to do here in insurance, military is, which in here says they've never had before to do flights from 500 feet to 9,000 feet, ever thing before was above the 9,000. And so I'm hoping you've had time to read the letter, but really a lot of just about our thought, like the things that go out here rurally, and I just can imagine an aircraft flying over a jet 500 or 1,000 feet above the ground and what that would do, I mean, not just to people, but everything else that's up there. So I'm gonna let, and I did include, this is a 300-page document that I just grabbed some pages out of.
You read all 300 words?
Every word.
I've been reading it for a while, but I've been feeling the area, I mean, it's just most of Medina County is covered in the pages I did pull out. But I'm gonna let Chuck and I bring a little bit more on that. I have had conversations, Congress, which is all his office is aware of this, and he is on it as well. I spoke to the president at Farm Year about it, and also a couple of the D R B people over there, so trying to bring awareness to this and that technology.
Thank you, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. The Air Force has a requirement to conduct fighter bomber fundamentals training, and to do this, they need low altitude airspace, down to 500 feet. Previously, and for many, many years, the Air Force has had a military operations area, and it, it is the same area that I think you have there in your notes. I've got a, I've got a few of it here as well.
Yes, yes.
The Randolph Military Operations, 2A is a military operations area. Yeah, it aligns with that right there, okay? So the military op, or the MOA that they've had over that area has been from 9,000 feet up to 18,000 feet.
And imagine that now stacked in airspace.
You see the red area that's depicted at the bottom? That, that's what they're proposing to become, also become a military operations area down to 500 feet AGL. So it'd be 500 feet to 9,000 feet. And as you can see, this area covers most of Medina County, some of Banderah County, some of Uvalde County, you know, essentially running from Pierceall over to Lidle, up to Pipe Creek, over to Vanderpool, and then down, back down to Pierceall. The requirement they have to do this type of training is based on a need for the Air Force aircraft to be able to deliver weapons to targets and avoid enemy radars. I have some personal experience with this from my flying in the Air Force, so I can vouch for that. At the same time, though, the notice that was put out, this is what was in the paper, okay? And like most people, you, we probably look through the paper and we see those notices and we may or may not pay attention to them. This thing was in there in the Hondo Antwell Herald, the 11th of February, so they've got a 30-day comment period, which we are rapidly closing in on. And the proposal itself is voluminous. There's a copy at all of the libraries, it's online. But the thing that I'd really call everyone's attention to is the finding of no significant impact, okay? This nine-page document is the one that I would really encourage everybody to take a few minutes and look at, because essentially, their draft assessment concludes that there's no impact to air traffic in the area, no impact to the airspace, no noise impact, other than what we've already got. And most of us, we probably have heard jets, okay, hitting afterburner, they're doing all sorts of combat maneuvering up there, but they're above 9,000 feet. And so, yeah, we may be aware of it, but it's not like these aircraft coming down to 500 feet and coming right over, you know, people, livestock, wildlife. And so a finding of no significant impact is one that I would encourage everyone to disseminate this information widely and have people think about it. And if nothing else, and I brought it to the judge's attention, suggesting, recommending that, okay, we at least provide some comment to them, respond back to them, so that we can engage in the process. Hopefully, there will be additional analysis and some interaction. I also recommended that we ask that the Air Force have an informational meeting, okay, so that they can describe, better describe just what they intend to do, and folks can better understand what this will amount to and come to some conclusions, some understanding of what the impact might be.
Chuck, can you also elaborate a little bit on the lines of the airport traffic is, I mean, this is somewhat close in that aspect as well?
Good, good point, excellent point, okay? So we have three airports in Medina County with an annual economic impact of approximately $20 million. $20 million, okay? And a lot of the air traffic coming in and out of these airports has not shown up in the environmental assessment that was done, okay? And that's understandable, because they base their information on radar tracks, instrument flight rule, flight plans. Most of what we have here in Medina County is visual flight rules. I'm a current pilot myself, flew a few weeks ago in the area. I do not file a flight plan. I fly visually, which most of this, most of our traffic here does. People coming in and out of our airports, buying fuel, spending money in the area. This would have, you know, some effect on those operations. As a pilot, you, you want to avoid flying in a military operations area, okay? I mean, when I flew for the Air Force in military operations areas, it's, it's great, because you're able to do your maneuvering, and in a designated area. But civilian traffic coming into that area, they avoid conflicts, mid-air collisions, on a see-and-avoid basis. When you have an aircraft moving four, 500 miles an hour across the ground maneuvering, and you're in a small airplane, maybe doing 100 miles an hour, that's something to really think about. So, general aviation pilots will tend to avoid military operations areas, or try to find out, okay, is the MOA hot today? Does it make sense? Is the risk worth it for me to fly into that area? What will hopefully be carefully looked at, and the FAA is involved in this proposal as well. They haven't engaged yet to, to assess it, but they will, and, you know, I really encourage everyone to think about it, and at least get into the process of what the impacts, you know, might be.
Yeah, we, you know, we just saw an incident like this with a civilian aircraft, military helicopter, that is an example of, and I mean, this, those were all trained pilots.
And that was in, that was in very controlled airspace, okay? And I act, I actually have considerable personal experience flying in that very spot. And as a pilot landing on that runway, we were always asking ourselves as pilots, where are the helicopters? Okay, because they're buzzing up and down the river. Anyway, we'll see what the investigation comes up with.
We have a lot, we have a lot of airline traffic. I mean, a lot, I mean, do you know, why not, since like, since like, it's constant?
Good question. So, those aircraft are, are under instrument flight rules typically, they are on a flight plan, so FAA Air Traffic Control is completely aware of them, and is providing separation, okay, for those flights, as well as separation from the military flights, okay? That can have some effect, though, because if you're on one of those flights, an airline flight, or a general aviation flight on the flight plan and instrument flight rules, they may route you all the way around this area, if the military is out there flying at the time.
We don't want to delay, sometimes by saving progress. We have to go around, instead of directly across.
Right. We also have, and I'm sure most of us, all of us have seen it, we have helicopters flying, emergency medical service helicopters, helicopters going to ranches, other aircraft going to ranches, access to the lands in the county, as well as adjacent counties.
Wellfields.
Draw, draw, bird.
Aerial applicators, yeah. And so, that's interesting. And I, I reside just north of Queehee on, on a ranch there, and so I observe a lot of this from the ground, as well as the air, whenever I fly. And the aerial applicators, what altitudes do they fly at? Well, they like to fly at 500 feet, up to about 1,000, 1,500 feet, you know, and they're going back, especially during application season, dusting season, I mean, they are going to fields all over the place. It can get very busy. So, there are a number of things, I think, to take into account here. The judge had mentioned the potential impact to deer breeder ranches in the area, exotic game ranches in the area, the hunting operations, I mean, you know, a jet like this at 500 feet could really mess up a hunt, but, you know.
How about drone, drone restrictions? They don't work on drones.
Okay. That, good question. So, drones are allowed to operate up to 400 feet.
400.
So, they got 100-foot separation, but.
So, if we're at a adverse impact, or have that conclusion, what is our endgame? Is it to stop this from happening? And if that's the case, where are they going to go? Is it all the things that we mentioned, the potential problems, wildlife, livestock, airline, that's everywhere, I mean, through this map all the way around?
Well, we need to go somewhere outside of our county.
They're going to a ranch, well, oh, they're going to the same, they're going to eight, five thousand, they're going all the way, that I, oh, we sit on a hill, and watch these, you've never even seen these, everybody, ever. Don't worry about it, but they're flying below the bunks off.
But they're coming from Randolph, to go.
They're going, they're going, they're somewhere out there in the.
You ought to, you ought to do it sometime, it's more fun.
I mean, places like that, somewhere out there.
There are places like that, but are they going to go from Randolph all the way out there, all the way to?
What I would try to encourage for, for all of us at this point, okay, is to simply find out more information and understand better what the requirement is, and what the impacts might be, as opposed to, you know, just likely saying, well, this is absolutely not going to work. As far as whether they do it somewhere else or not, and how they do it, the environmental assessment touches on this some, probably not adequately, so that would be something else, you know, to have some interaction with the Air Force on. And I have recommended that we ask them for an informational meeting and some back-and-forth. I've talked to the Air Force, some, the, the people at Lackland that are managing this process, and they are very forthcoming, they're very interested, you know, in interaction to work towards the best solution for all parties involved.
Yeah, that's, if they're flying five days a week, there's another twelve of these, based on the information that they're talking about in that chart, I think, there's a few thousand stories a year.
And so, that's going to be.
Problems.
Yeah, on weekdays, Monday through Friday, seven in the morning till 10 at night, yeah, you pretty much have a dozen of these a day on average. Now, the one thing that occurs in the military operations area like this, when they go out and fly these missions, they're not going to be flying a set track, a set, they're going to be mixing it up, okay? And from my experience doing these, we always tried to avoid, avoid houses, avoid agricultural areas as much as possible. The, the understanding, I think, expressed, well, the understanding expressed in the environmental assessment is, this is a sparsely populated area, and even though our population has just risen above 50,000 or so, it is becoming more and more dispersed throughout the county. So that, as an Air Force pilot, if I'm trying to plot a track that I'm going to do simulated training for a bomber on, or a strafing, strafing run, I'm going to have a hard time putting down a track that, you know, doesn't fly real close to a house, or, you know, humans, wildlife, livestock, sensitive wildlife, those are the things that hopefully we can have some more discussion about.
So, my concern is, is it very low?
Well, I've, I've flown lower.
Okay, fire.
It, it is very low, yes.
And if this, for, for somebody that is, you typically don't see that, general population would have a reaction to seeing a jet fly by.
It's definitely going to get your attention, okay? So, in a smaller general aviation aircraft, if I fly near or by your house at that altitude, yeah, you may notice it, and may wonder, what's going on? Why is that airplane so low? These aircraft come upon you so fast, it is a sudden, extremely loud sounder noise, and then it's gone. And it's like, okay, what was that?
Are you at the air shows?
Yeah.
What's that?
Like the air shows, when they're coming in.
There you go, yeah, yeah. If you go to an air show to enjoy this, or just imagine that, you can have your own air show right at your house.
But I mean, it is easy from the public, though, imagine looking across two football fields and looking up, that's not far, I mean, it's not very far. And that's what you're looking at, it is not very far for me.
It's not at all.
So, so hopefully, we, I strongly encourage everyone to take a few minutes, look at this, and, and respond, okay? So, on the notice, they have a, an address here, an electronic, you know, an email address. Please respond, if, you know, and even if you don't feel like you understand a lot about it, nevertheless, it would be very good to engage and to learn more. That's, you know, really what it's about, for, for everyone involved to understand what the impacts, you know, might be, and how to, how to resolve it, best resolve it.
So, so my concern, just with reading the page, from the summary of the potential environmental consequences, is they found Fonzie, finding a significant impact on noise.
On what?
On noise.
Right, right.
And state.
So, the basis, what I, and I've done these throughout my career, as you've dealt with them a lot, too, the Fonzie, the finding of no significant impact, this is probably a good place to start with one of these, is saying that there's no significant impact, okay? And if there are few or any comments or responses, well, there mustn't be any significant impact. And so, that's why I encourage anyone that may have a notion to engage, by all means, engage. There are no dumb questions here, okay? And I can assure you, the, the folks with the Air Force, they would approach it the same way, and, and they would be receptive to whatever comments, whatever responses come in, because finding no significant impact, no impact or no significant impact, at this point, from our perspective, we would tend to differ with that, but there's, there's bound to be some things here that ought to be looked at very carefully.
So, do you have a jet, passing by your house at 500 feet, what is the decibel level like? Or can you give a reliable example to the landlord? Or is it a loud concert? Do you know?
Yes, and yes. But I'm not, I'm not in a position to give a specific response or answer to that. The environmental assessment talks about that some, okay? But I'm going to say that it really needs more careful evaluation, okay? And, and what that noise incident, the effect of it on humans, livestock, wildlife, high-dollar wildlife, because that, what I saw in the environmental assessment, that was not specifically addressed, and as you're saying, it, it, as you're pointing out, it needs to be.
Is it going to shake your house?
Yeah.
Is it going to cause structural damage? Are there going to be some change here?
There ought to, there should, and, and I'm thinking there should be some interaction there, and I, and, you know, my conversations with Air Force thus far, they are interested in, you know, in those sorts of things as well. This is simply a, it's draft, it's draft environmental assessment, a draft finding of no significant impact, and so there's probably more work to go, and I encourage everyone to engage to the extent that you can, and encourage the court to respond, which I think is what the judge is moving towards.
So, we have a letter that was provided to you, for us to sit down with the comments, again, as far as all that we support with the military, Chuck helped to draft this in the future, you know, we support, and always have, in Medina County, the military and these flight, but we're at this new level, or, you know, five, we're at the 9,000 feet, there's serious concerns that they can be fed out, so that's what the letter was out in the Capitol Court. I love that it was a big enough deal, and I really just missed in the letter, and I felt like the court needed to look at it and say, you know, we need to give some more information.
And, and that's, that's a good direction to go.
I make a motion to the submit comments to the Department of the Air Force regarding the draft environmental assessment for Randolph Two-A Low Military Operations Area Special Use airspace. Second. Have a motion by Commissioner Lynch, second by Commissioner Lawler, to submit comments to the Department of the Air Force regarding the draft environmental assessment for Randolph Two-A Low Military Operations Area Special Use airspace. Any other discussion?
If you have any, I'll hear them, they're on drones, off the shirt bar, if that drone gets to 250 feet, it's fair game, and you'll be there.
Any other discussion? All in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, item 22, discuss and take possible actions to accept the following 2024 racial profiling reports submitted by the following constables, Constable Precinct One, Constable Precinct Two. We did these for the sheriff's office last, last court, to accept, we didn't bring their report for, for, but in here, you have, the first one is, one, very short, Precinct One, because they don't make any traffic stops, that's why you need somebody on the page, and then, of course, you got, the rest of them, all of that, first page on there is all of our, Chirraski's report.
I'll make a motion to accept the following 2024 racial profiling reports submitted by the following constables, Constable Precinct One and Constable Precinct Two.
Second. Have a motion of Commissioner Gasman, second by Commissioner Sitter, to accept the 2024 racial profiling reports submitted by Constable Precinct One and Constable Precinct Two. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 23, discuss and take possible action to rear point Roland Dillon for a two-year term in Medina County, 911 University, Communications District Board of Managers. I believe, I believe 2001 trouble, I think he's what he, I need to quit it, so they can agree for a second.
I make a motion to Roland Dillon, two-year term, to, to have a university communications district board of managers.
Second. Have a motion, Commissioner Lynch, second by Commissioner Lawler, to give Tony Roland Dillon for a two-year term to the Medina County 911 University Communications District Board of Managers. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 24, discuss and take possible action to approve a yearly service agreement with the Medina County Historical Commission for preserving and recording the history of Medina County. As it says, this is something we do annually with, with down the agreement, and we actually pay them $1,500 a year to do that, so. I would say 13, Director Dean. I'll make a motion to approve a yearly service agreement with the Medina County Historical Commission for preserving and recording the history of Medina County. Second. Have a motion, Commissioner Lawler, second by Commissioner Lynch, to approve the yearly service agreement with the Medina County Historical Commission for preserving and recording the history of Medina County. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Motion carries.
Item 25, discuss and take possible action to accept the annual financial report for the year ended September 30th, 2024, for Medina County Emergency Services District Number 2.
I make a motion to accept the annual financial report for the year ended September 30th, 2024, for Medina County EMS Service District Number 2.
I have a motion, Commissioner Waller, seconded by Commissioner Sider, to accept the annual financial report for the year ended September 30th, 2024, for Medina County Emergency Services District Number 2. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item 26, discuss and take possible action to declare items from the following offices as surplus for salvage and authorized disposal. This is from County clerk's office, salvage of a bonsai crosscut shredder, having seen the bills, pay attention to repair, it's not repairable, so this definitely means your salvage.
I make a motion to be declared items from the following offices as surplus for salvage and authorized disposal, County clerk's.
Second.
I have a motion, Commissioner Lynch, seconded by Commissioner Waller, to dispose of the salvage for the County clerk's bonsai crosscut shredder. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Nicole, we, we, I'm sorry, we, we went, we did the item, if there's anything that you would like to add, but basically the courts, like, yes, we're going to start moving through the process. Maggie from our, the DA's office has the bylaws that were, you know, Maggie in the back room, there's Maggie, so she has the bylaws to kind of start looking at it, so we want to start looking through the process and moving in. Is there anything else you want to add?
No, I apologize, I, in my head, I thought we started at 10.
We used to.
Okay, okay, it sounds like it was in my mind.
Yeah, we started at 9 now, just keep going, you've got a break between 10 and 10, so.
Okay, okay, I apologize for missing it.
It's good, but, but you're good too.
Okay, perfect, I appreciate it very much, thank you.
All right, our court intervenants.
We have been working with Precinct 4 over the past couple of weeks to get some material that was supplied by Ted Rock. I'll let Danny throw out his plug for actually naming the mountain of material that is currently at his yard. So, we've been helping him with that. We've been doing a lot of work here, Precinct 2, due to the wind event that happened on Tuesday, we've had a lot of damaged trees from the drought, some of them are out of the park, so it's been taking a lot of clean up. We have been shredding some of the county roads that are located within the subdivision in Precinct 1. We're also still working on getting repair in the area. We're just starting to regrade our gravel roads that we have in Precinct 1, have a little bit of rain, but it's time to get back on that circuit and start regrading those, they don't have the wash going on those gravel roads, and then just continuing to patch potholes as they pothole because of the misty rain and, and the traffic. Everything else is, is going well.
Well, one day it'll end and three days it's finished.
Yes, yes.
I want to, I want to do, we are cutting shoulders on, uh, right now, about 15 miles of different ways, cutting shoulder back and potholes with the rain off, and we want to be doing some stockpiling, copper rock to take care of about 12, 15 miles of, second go.
We are doing a little labor, doing a little patching, doing a lot of tree pickup still from heavy winds, and we're looking forward to borrowing Larry's new material.
Precedent.
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 Precinct 4, we've been hauling material, like Jessica said, that was donated to us, we completed that on March 5th, which was the deadline, picking up trees and still, we're actually still picking up trees, so, and then Friday is supposed to be windy again, so we're, today I have a crew that's going around looking for any of the trees that are left in the county roadways, and removing them before Friday.
You didn't tell us along the mountain.
I haven't named the mountain.
Oh, you're still working on it?
Well, I was down there. I'm still working on it.
The good news is you're not going to be coming to try to sign new equipment, the whole place in the Arctic Park.
That is a fact.
Pretty, pretty depressing, it's like the old country.
I wasn't sure we were going to get it all in there, but it is.
It looks like it's really beautiful. It is. Yeah, that's awesome. Excellent. Okay, one thing I have is we will have a workshop set for 10:30 on March 24th, and that is to go over fire codes, so we'll be bringing them, Mark is already working on contact in the cities, the ESD, they have fire, all of our apartments and stuff, so in that workshop, we're going to, they're working through the final parts of that draft now, and then hopefully by next week, a week before our workshop, we're going to do that out to all of them, so they have time to review it, and then they will really just grade people and see if there are any comments on it, and then if there are things we want to do to be able to incorporate those items before we get to the meeting two weeks later, so I hope that by the, was it able to settle the things that we, that we'll be in a position to actually adopt the new fire code. So, that's the plan for it. In addition to that, at the workshop, if we get everything in order, I think we will, but we're working on a order to be able to prevent sexually oriented businesses, and we can provide some information just for you all to kind of prep with between now and the workshop, same thing, it's, it's a lot, orders, lots of pages, maybe was it, many, much, 70?
I think 80 something.
80 something pages, though, because there's so much detail, and Addison County recently dealt with this, and, you know, the order was able to stand and to, to allow that to move forward, so, working on that and just present that as well, and hopefully, same thing, I'm able to set, we'll be in a position to be able to actually adopt that order, so there's going to be also time to absorb it, because it's quite a bit. So, that's all I have this morning, and, I may have broken out earlier. Have a motion, seconded by Commissioner Waller, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for doing my, so.